Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November the 29th, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we have with us a very famous pastor that's known far and wide here. He's the pastor of the Total Baptist Church. It's Pastor David Samples to give us the invocation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we're so grateful to live in this country, and we're grateful to live in this state and this county. And, Lord, we want to pray for our commissioners. We want to pray, Father, for our elected officials. Father, we want to pray for those who work day in and day out, for our county, for our benefit. Lord, we pray that you might grant wisdom and guidance. We pray for health. We pray, Father, for prosperity for our county. May you be glorified, may you be honored, in Jesus' name, amen.
Now join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my pride, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the pledge to Texas.
Honor Texas pride.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Okay, and now we have some service awards. Is that correct?
Yes, but I don't think anyone's here this morning.
No one's here, so we will give them at a later date then, okay?
Yes, we'll reach out to them.
All right. Now, today, if you want to have any comments from the citizens, you have to fill out a public participation form. They're back there with the sheriff, and the sheriff will put you in line, give them to Ms. the county clerk, and then they will back them, and at the proper time, I will give them up here. So Ms. Lang will do that and hand them to me. Okay, on the consent agenda, does anybody wish to pull anything or make any changes or comments to anything on the consent agenda?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton. To approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, now we have business. No road ops, right, Mr.?
No, sir.
No road ops, okay. So now we've got Mr. Clinthead in development. Yes, sir.
Morning, Judge, morning Commissioners. Staff has accepted applications for two replats. First one's in Hideaway Bay Estates, Lot 6R and 7R on Block 6 and Precinct 4, and Acton Meadows, Lot 1R and 4R in Precinct 3. Staff recommends setting public hearings for these replats for the January 10th, 2023, Commissioners' Court.
Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion to set the public hearings on the two plots as stated for January the 10th of 2023?
I'll make that motion to set the public hearings for those two.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by-
Oh, for January 10th, right?
Yes.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to set the two public hearings for Hideaway Bay Estates and Acton Meadows for January the 10th, 2023, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay, next.
Next item we have is a preliminary plat of Hewitt Estates. It's in Precinct 3. The property is located at 5809 Walnut Creek Drive in Granbury, proposes to create six single-family lots. The concept plan for this preliminary plat was approved on August 8th, 2022, Commissioners' Court. This preliminary plat is located in the water quality district and will be served by a mud water and onsite sewage facilities. The preliminary plat proposes to construct 329 linear feet of 2-inch hot mix asphalt streets. All lots are just a little over 1 acre in size. There will be fire hydrants installed for fire protection. There are no variances requested at this time for this preliminary plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Hewitt Estates as presented.
Your motion?
I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Hewitt Estates, Lots 1 through 6, Block 1.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the preliminary plat of the Hewitt Estates, Lots 1 through 6, Block 1, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Next. Oh, we've got a convening to a public hearing to discuss and consider the site development plan for Rustic Ranch RV Park 6 space expansion, Precinct 2. So at this time at 9:07, we'll convene into a public hearing.
This is a site development plan of Rustic Ranch. It's a 6-space expansion, which includes approving onsite sewage treatment facility. This property is located at 2515 Williamson Road, and will be on lots 38 and 39 and Block 17R of Hunterwood, subdivision of Hood County, Texas. The site development plan is located in the rural district and will be served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. The proposed site development plan proposes to have six additional recreational vehicle spaces added to an existing RV park. The court approved 15 spaces on this RV park in January of 2021 that were on lots 31 through 33 and Lot 35 of Block 17R. There are no variances associated with this site development plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff does recommend conditional approval contingent upon meeting all environmental health permitting requirements, including getting their appropriate sewer design.
Okay. We've got any comments or discussion about this development plan?
Did you say it's on public water?
Yes, Aqua Texas.
And there's no, I know that there's a, when you get so many on like a water well system, you're considered a public, I mean, is there any problem with that on the septic side?
No, not that I'm aware of. This is gonna have its own different lots than the last one, so there was some changes sent, or Jeanie wanted on this-
Have you applied yet with environmental health on-
Well, she was reviewing it, and there's some changes she wanted, and it hadn't got done yet. That's why I say conditional approval contingent upon all her permitting requirements.
Any other comment? Okay, with this time at 9:10, we're gonna close the public hearing and convene back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the development plan of Rustic Ranch RV-
Condition.
-Park, Space 6.
Condition.
Conditional on approval of all environmental health permit requirements.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton for a conditional approval of the development plan of Rustic Ranch RV Park with the 6 space contention, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Now, we've got financial. Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, for today, we have two fiscal years, and we are finally done with fiscal year '22, which is $40,022.07. Fiscal year '23 is $720,064.57. We've reviewed the invoices, see no issues, and recommend payment.
Okay, any discussion or comment? Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills as stated for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the fiscal year 2022 bills and the fiscal year 2023 bills as stated therein, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. What else you have, Ms. E.
Monthly reports. We've received the monthly reports as listed on your agenda. We've reviewed these and asked that you accept them.
Any question or comment? Do I hear appropriate motion?
I see you've got your missing one from the county clerk. Where does that stand?
We are working on that one for September, and once we get, well, we're working on an audit to get some information, and working with Katie to get these things updated, and as soon as we can get everything lined out, we will have them on the agenda.
Okay. Now do I hear appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the, you know, the financial reports received by the Audit Department for the period of November 1, 2022, through November 15, 2022.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the financial reports that's reviewed by the Audit Department, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay, this brings us down to the miscellaneous part of the agenda, and it's with great pride and honor that I introduce everybody to Mr. Jeff Harris, who is the CEO of the Ken Hill Foundation, and is gonna come up here and explain something to us that is very interesting, and I think we can pull that up on the screen, can't we? Owen? There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for letting me speak with you this morning. The purpose of my coming before you is to present an opportunity for the Kenneth Hill Foundation to donate two bronzes to be placed in a prominent location in the city or county of Granbury, Hood County. Ken Hill was a resident of Hood County and Granbury back in the early '70s. I see some of you nodding your heads. He's a very well-respected businessman. When he graduated from School of Pharmacy in Austin, he moved to Granbury and opened up a drugstore called The Drugstore on the Courthouse Square. It's right where 1890 Grill area is on the square. While he was a resident here, he served on the, he served in several capacities of the city, one of them being a mayor, and he was very influential in getting Granbury moving forward from a small rural town to what you guys oversee today. Ken left Granbury only because the company that he started, which was a retail pharmacy software company, outgrew the communication lines between Fort Worth and Granbury, or he would have probably still lived here up until the time he died. He grew that company to be the largest of what it did at the time in North America, providing software and services to retail pharmacy. I served under him for 28 years, and at the time he sold the company in 2020, he, at the time he sold that company in 2020, he began to make plans for how he was gonna handle the proceeds from the sale of the company. He started another company. I was asked to come back and serve as CEO of that company, having served as CEO for his other companies. Upon Ken's death in November of 2020, I learned that I was the executor of his estate, and also came to understand what the Kenneth Hill Foundation was about. So that's why I stand before you today, representing that foundation and actually Ken's estate. Part of the foundation's requirements is that they donate 5% of the value of the foundation. This past year, first year ended in October of this year, 31st, and at that time, there was $1.4 million that the foundation awarded to a number of charities. Of that $1.4 million, $900,000 of that was donated to local charities here in Hood County and Granbury, and I would anticipate that that would move forward for another five to 10 years, and it could bring $5, $6, $7 million of donations to charities in this area. I say that as the trustee of the Ken Hill Foundation. There is an advisory group, so I have to consider what they recommend, but several members of the advisory group, including Ken's daughter Scamper Hero Cole, who now owns Comanche Peak, is on that committee with me, and she's very supportive of charities here. So as a longtime employee with Ken and a good friend, and being the executor of his estate, I want to do everything I can to recognize his contributions to the city and to the county, not only while he lived here and served here, but also through moving forward through donations that will come from the Ken Hill Foundation. Ken had big plans to build a big dude ranch type of operation up on Comanche Peak. At the time he died, he had paperwork on his desk that showed it was gonna be about $225 million when he finished it all out. It's a nice-sized estate that he has, but it's nothing of that amount, so I arranged to transfer Comanche Peak to his daughter in exchange for some of her stock. Part of his plans was he was gonna have several large bronzes made and displayed prominently out on Comanche Peak when he opened up this ranch, and clearly that's not an option now. So I'm looking for a home for these two bronzes. The one you see here is called Silent Prey. It's being cast by a foundry down in Bastrop, Texas. It was Heart of Texas Foundry. That's recently changed names to Pyrographs of Texas or something like that. They're very well-renowned, have bronzes that they've done all over the United States and other countries. I've been there and visited it. The Black Star Bronze is completed, and they're storing it, waiting for me to tell them where to deliver it to. Part of what was included in paying them to make these bronzes included the delivery and setting up the bronzes. After that, it would be left up to whoever's overseeing them to maintain them, which from what I understand is really just keeping them clean. So that's really my proposal in trying to do that. There's several, in addition to honoring Ken, the, these bronzes were cast by a local artist who recently passed away, Covell Jones. Some people know how prominent he is and the work that he was recognized for doing, so it's not only honoring Ken, but honoring a local artist from this area. So I think that's the proposal. The Silent Prey has not been completed yet. It's estimated to be at the end of the first quarter, and so I would think probably sometime next year, if we can come to an agreement on where to locate these bronzes at, they would be available to be brought here and set up. Chris Compton was nice enough to take me around and show me all the different parks and areas, and speaking with my advisory groups, the one that they were most excited about, not limiting just to that, but just in all transparency, the area we thought would be most prominent for people to see and recognize Ken's contributions, and Covell Jones's artwork was around the courthouse on the square. So that was our first choice. But do you have any questions for me?
I'll tell you, I think that the contribution that Ken Hill has made, everybody that's been around Hood County and Granbury for a while knows of Ken Hill or didn't know him personally.
Right.
And his charitable outlook and his love for Hood County, I think, is he puts his money where his mouth is, that's for sure, and has made some wonderful contributions to Hood County, and I for one, I think that there's a place on the historical square there that we could figure out, a place maybe on the southeast corner down there. There's a blank place there that we could make one, and I would like to, I'd move that we accept the donation of at least one, or we could get together with the committee to find out, I'd like to vote now to give the approval to place at least one of the bronzes, possibly two, if the proper area can be agreed upon between your foundation and the rest of the commission here to place it, but place it on the historical square there. That's where it's most notable, I think, that people could see that, and I think that deserves a place of that prominence. So I'd like to make that and put that in form of the motion that we accept one or both of these bronzes for placement on the courthouse, historic courthouse square.
Second. And that's second by Commissioner Wilson. Anybody have anything further to say or anything else that they would like to add to this, other than we're sure to appreciate the generosity and thoughtfulness of both Ken Hill and his daughter, and for you? How long were you, do you still live in Hood County?
I do. I live in Pecan Plantation. I moved here, I used to drive through Granbury when I lived in Brownwood, and I told my wife, if we ever moved this area, this is where we're gonna live. So when Ken offered me a job, I was living in San Antonio at the time, and we came immediately to Hood County and looked for a place to live, and raised her kids here and never left, so we love it.
I've heard this story over and over. I came to Granbury once, stayed here for a couple of days, and loved it, and never wanted, this is where I wanted to stay, so that's really great, and I'm glad that you're here, and glad you're part of the community. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously four zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you for your time. I did send Judge Massengill some information about the bronzes, more information, the cost, they're valued by the time we complete them, about $600,000. So they're very impressive, and I think the city will be really blessed to have them, so.
That'd be good.
If you could make that information available to them, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I will. I will have it made available.
All right.
Thank you very much. Come back anytime. Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Okay, item number two, consider and take appropriate action to not renew the County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Service and to put out for bid the County Fleet Maintenance and Service-
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So as you know, with the long lead time on new vehicles, the county's having to do more and more repairs, and while we normally have a main repair vendor and some alternates, we currently just have one, which makes things difficult when they get backed up, or we want a second opinion on a particular repair, or, you know, a different company to look at. And so what I prefer to do, rather than renewing the one, I'd like to put this out for bid, so we can once again have multiple repair vendors for our vehicles. I think it would be a good thing for departments to have that option, to have multiple options for the repairs and for second opinions.
Okay, that's good. Have any questions or comments?
When's this contract due up with?
It comes up the end of, I believe it's the end of the year or right at the beginning of January. Probably wouldn't have the new contract in place until February 1st, but I think we can, we can work okay for a couple of weeks in there.
Do I hear a proper motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to not review, not renew the RFB 2020-007 County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Services and put it out for bid an RFP 2023-001 County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Services.
Second. Okay, a motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to not renew the County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Services and put it out for bid, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the county clerk's official oath and bond. Ms. Lang, you and I were discussing up here, and you said that actually for any other elected official, that we could put that on consent agenda between now and the first of the year. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir. If they don't want to come up and talk about it, they're, they have that option, so I just pretty much put mine on here so I could remind everybody, come, put your bond into Commissioners' Court, get it approved, and you'll be good for January 1st. And I think I have two speakers also on the subject.
Okay, we do. First one is Steve Biggers.
Good morning, Court. Everybody as well today, and had a good Thanksgiving. Two things I wanted to bring up while I got you guys together, other than Commissioner Andrews, one of them being in this vein on othing. The executives, GOP Executive Committee voted last Tuesday to sponsor and have an official othing ceremony this year, January 1, 2 to 4 downtown in front of the courthouse at the gazebo, and I think there are five people in this room that are taking oaths, along with a couple that are giving oaths, so let's make a deal out of it. Let's make a big thing out of it. If the weather's bad, we'll go inside in the courthouse, but right now, Commissioner Andrews is gonna run point on that with you guys, having to all get together, along with reserving the parking lot for parking and sitting and those kinds of things. So we're pretty excited about this. There's 10 people, as I said, invitations are out to Birdwell, Slosson, and Williams, so hopefully we'll make this a big event and the GOP can get together as Republicans and show our unity and camaraderie. The club and the Women's Republican Club is gonna get together and do the refreshments, I believe, so we can do that in the gazebo area. Second, a little deviating off that, but we did vote on this, we want to invite you guys as a court to be involved in a Christmas program that the CEC voted on to be a part of. We are gonna hopefully find four families within each one of your precincts and make it a special Christmas for them. We're dealing with food, Krogers and HEB and all that to donate food along the CEC decided to do $500 worth. I've extended some of the invitations already to some of these commissioners and oncoming commissioners. They're aware of that. They want to donate $100 each. I would hope you guys would maybe want to come on board with that, too. Rhonda Williams, the Executive Committee Media Director, will be individually reaching out to you guys, but this is a personal thing. This is not county money thing. It's a personal thing for you guys to be a part of, but it would be a good opportunity in these times with economic stress that some of these people have, to step up and maybe make a good Christmas for four families involved here, and just kind of us and the CEC and a few other people. There's some citizens that want to get behind this, too, so. Once again, January 1, 2 to 4 downtown, there'll be an othing ceremony, there's 10 of us in here, it'll just be a cascading event. I think Birdwell is gonna do, Buffkins and Buffkins is gonna do on down the line, those kinds of things, so hope to see you guys then. Thanks.
Okay, Harold Grannick.
I'll pass.
You pass? Okay. All right. So, now, do I hear a proper motion about approving the county clerk's official oath and bond?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the county clerk's official oath and bond, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay. Next. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action regarding sales tax surplus. Discussion to include payments to Texas County and District Retirement System and/or payment of current debt. The illustrious Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, again. We have excess sales tax in the amount of $1,649,769.49. This can only be used to reduce debt or a liability. TCDRS is a liability. It's always good to put money in there to keep us fully funded at two and a half percent. We're, we're well-funded as it is, but doesn't hurt to stay there. You can also pay down debt. My idea for this is half for TCDRS and half to pay off some debt. In 18, we had $32,323,000 in bonded debt, including the Crescent Bypass. Right now, we have $12,130,000. So, we've paid off quite a bit of debt. There are two loans left. Principal balance on the 2014 limited tax bonds is $1,025,000. And on the Justice Center, which we had two, one of them is paid off, $5,205,000. I'd like to completely pay off the $1,025,000. It is, there are two years left to pay that. I'd like to get that paid off, be done with that, and then any additional monies paid down on the $5,205,000. But that's what I would like to do, split this money in half, or whatever percentage you would like to do.
What's that? First number, $1 million what?
The...
That you want to pay off? $1,200,000?
$1,250,000.
Twenty, well, okay.
And there is, there is some interest with that. There's $11,000, which is due in February, and $5,590, which is due in August, so that, and then, of course, there's, there would be more interest if we, for next year, but, so it'd be somewhere in the ballpark of about $1,030,000, let's say.
Will save some interest, pay it off early?
Yes, sir.
Don't have that number?
No. It won't be very much, but again, this is what we can use it for, and we knock another one off the books.
And which, which debt is that?
The first one, the $1,025,000, is, it's a 2014 limited tax bonds. More than likely, that was Justice Center, or it could have been to get vehicles. I don't borrow money for vehicles. We budget it.
So, yours, yours, I'm kind of confused on the math here. You said half and half when you came up, but now we're talking really $1,030,000, let's say, and then 600 plus?
Well, I, I have, I already have a payment budgeted for the $1,025,000.
That's not from sales tax?
That is not from sales tax, no.
So, what other debt could that go to?
That's it. TCDRS or bonded debt. It's always good to keep your TCDRS fully funded.
So, we pay off this debt that you've already budgeted in, what do we do with that other, what you've budgeted for that debt? Where does that go?
That goes to pay. The total payoff, I have a budgeted payment of, I don't remember what it is.
But it's not the whole amount?
No, it's not. It's, it's $455,000 or $500,000. I don't remember, because there's two years left. So, on my paper, I've already plugged in the amount to pay off. But there are two payments left. One's a little higher than the other, and I've budgeted for the, whatever we have this year, plus the one for the limited tax, one's on the Justice Center. Those payments are budgeted in them, and that total payoff on, on the money that's there would be $3 million with what we kick in and what we have.
How much would go to the repayment of pay down on the retirement?
Whatever, however you want to divvy it up. There's $1,649,769.
A little over $600,000 that would go in, if you'd paid off the 1.1 million 25,000, then it'll be a little over $600,000 left to put on the TDRS.
Well, again, I've budgeted half of this payment already.
I'm totally confused. I'm sorry.
Just, just tell me.
I mean, this is not making a bit of mathematical sense. Start over again, will you?
Well, we have to make a decision today. So, we have $1,649,769 in excess sales tax.
I got that.
Okay. That can be used to pay off debt or liability.
I get that.
I would like to pay off the remainder after we pay the normal payment on the 2014 limited tax bonds, again, which is either $455,000 or $500,000. I don't remember that payment. Add money to that to pay this loan off entirely, including the interest.
Okay, so, the first thing is about $460,000, let's say, off of the 1.649?
Right.
Okay. Keep going.
Then you can pay the rest to TCDRS, or a portion of that, and pay some on the other bond that we still have.
Two years left on that one, just, I know, I don't want to make it any more confusing, but when you got, you got a $5 million debt, you would think you would have more interest due on that. And so, if we took a chunk out of that, wouldn't we save a little more interest?
Maybe. It just depends on how these are structured.
Okay.
But again, whatever, however you wanted to divide this up. If you want to put a million toward the $5 million loan and the rest to TCDRS, then make me happy.
How much would that be, then? If you put a million towards the other one, and then how much would go towards the retirement?
$600,000, $649,000.
Is that what you recommend from looking at everything?
Yes. Your, your $5 million loan, that payment I do know is about $20,000. When they structure our, our bond money out, they, they watch where we are, and the farther out we pay, the more the payment grows every year. There's seven years left on the $5 million loan. Next year, that payment is about $700,000, and it grows until it's almost $1 million, and you pay it off. So, paying that to, to that one would knock off a year for sure of paying on this one.
Okay. We've got one loan that you've already budgeted for, you know, payment next year, early next year, correct?
I have, I have payments budgeted for both of these loans.
Okay. But I'm talking about, you know, the one that's almost paid, that would almost be paid off?
Yes.
Seemed to me it'd make more sense to pay that one off, you know, with what you've already got budgeted, with the payment you've got budgeted, and get that one totally off the books.
Again, that's why I'm here, whatever you guys want to do.
So, what would that figure be out of the $1,650,000 to pay it off?
To pay off the $1 million loan?
The one that Jack's asking you about?
Again, there's either a $455,000 payment or a $500,000 payment. I've already blocked that and knocked that off of here. So, it's going to be about half a million to pay that off.
Then you've got a million left.
Then you've got a million left to pay to TCDRS, which I'm not sure you want to pay that much. It's up to you.
No, I don't, I don't think we need to put that.
You know, whatever, you know, take what's left after you, you know, take care of that small one, and then the balance that's left, the million roughly, correct?
Somewhere in that number.
1.2.
Could I, could I do half and half? Half to TCDRS and half to the...
That's what I was going to suggest, if we do half and half on that, after we've taken care of that other one, the smaller one.
You making that in form of a motion?
I will make that in form of a motion. Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
Can you tell me your motion?
The motion is that we use, you know, the budget that's already, you know, the account that's already been budgeted to the smaller loan, and then finish taking out of the 1.6 mil, pay that one off in total, and then it's off the books, and then the balance that's left, 1.2, whatever, you know, 1.1, 1.2, whatever that number is, is to be split between the other, the $5 million, and then the TCDRS.
What'd you say? You threw out the number $700,000. What was that note?
I don't, don't know what that is. I don't remember that number.
I understand that if you use new money with what you already budgeted, that, that's going to pay for the $1 million loan, leaving a $1 million that you're going to split equally between the retirement system and $500,000 or whatever's left for the, for the $5 million loan. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's what he said.
Yeah, that's what...
My motion. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson's motion, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion or comment?
And this means that about $600,000 will be going into the retirement?
And, and by doing that, we've been doing that for several years. When TCDRS had a bad year, it really helped that we've been doing this, because some counties had to pony up $1 million right then and there. We did not have to do that. We had to increase what we were sending, but we sure didn't have to come up with $1 million. So, this is just smart business sense to keep this as fully funded as possible.
Plus, it helps pay towards COLA, the COLAs that we've done.
Well, and again, we've had this discussion where, years ago, they just kept giving COLAs to the retired people, and they financed it. We're not doing that. We haven't done that. We're not going to, I'll never recommend financing a COLA, ever. And we're still paying that off. That's why it's still going to be a while before that's done, but thank you, Melissa.
You agree with this? Do you mind, Ms. Welborn?
Of course. We have a very nice retirement plan, and I think it's great. I think it's great when the court does agree to pay additional funds towards that plan. I think it's very beneficial for our county as a whole.
Any other discussion or comment?
One last thing. So, we got about 450 going into the 2014 limited tax bond.
Yes.
We got about 600 going into another debt, unspecified at the moment.
No, that's not unspecified. That's the Justice Center, the 2019 Justice Center bond.
So, we got a 2014 bond, 450,000, a 2019 bond, 600,000, roughly, and then 600 retirement. Is that right?
And once I talk to Jim Sabonis on, and get actual numbers of complete payoff and what all they need to have, I'll send that out.
Okay.
But we will process a EFT for the 600,000, or roughly that, somewhere near that amount, because we have to get that payment in, so that they can give us our amounts to be debited next year. And we'll get that in the next court. TCDRS, we pay them with an EFT in the next court.
So, those are close numbers?
Yes, sir. Those are approximate, but they'll, they'll be pretty close.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion and the second, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. All right. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to approve revisions to the Hood County Operation and Use of County Vehicles policy. Ms. Welborn?
Good morning. Each of you received a copy of these revisions last week, and I'm here to make any changes. I did send it over to the Sheriff's Office. They, I have not heard from them, so I assume they're okay with these changes. I know y'all did discuss some other possibilities. I'm not sure where they're at. The last time I spoke to the county attorney, he had not spoke to anyone with the Sheriff's Office at that point in time. So, these are the changes to reflect the, the motion and vote you took last on this, I don't even remember what day it was. It was on that Friday, the 18th, I believe. This reflects those changes. If you want to do anything additional, I'll revise the policy and bring it back. I just needed the corrections made based off of what court action.
I think it...
It looks like what we...
I think the revisions accomplished what we stated. Mr. Mills, you want to weigh in on this?
I think when Ms. Welborn sent it over, it was not really addressing the additional discussion from the last court about dropping kids off at school, or basically riders in vehicles. That was something that I think...
This addresses special situations.
Okay.
Which it would be your ride-alongs.
Yeah, I mean, we, I didn't get anything, I think Mr. Berry was, Jonathan, was talking about sending me some stuff from other courts or other counties, and I haven't received that, but this is just a pretty standard amendment to what we're doing that doesn't specifically get into should we or should we not allow that additional stuff.
And I don't think we agreed, I don't think we agreed to that, taking kids to school.
Right. And that's, it's not in here, so...
Good.
Yeah.
So, what, what is in there is what we did agree to with no additional stuff?
Yeah, taking them home, 30-mile radius outside of Hood County, with all the law enforcement people, road and bridge, and even extension. So, we, we went beyond the Sheriff's Office. We went through all departments.
That's correct. Yes, I know those specific departments do take their vehicles home.
Right.
That's been approved in previous courts.
Any additional comment? Do I hear a motion that we go ahead and accept these revisions to the Hood County Operation and Use of County Vehicle Policy?
Yes, I'll make that motion, that we approve the current proposed revision to the Hood County Operation and Use County Vehicle Policy.
Second. By Commissioner Wilson to approve the revisions to the Hood County Operation and Use of County Vehicle Policy, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Ms. Welborn.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action for additional funding to repair or replace failing HVAC units in county buildings. This is Mr. Jay Riley.
Here he comes again. Look at the money.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you. This is the same as we've been doing. This all started back in May of 2019. So, currently, we've came in and got, for lack of a better term, a bucket of money for me to replace failing units throughout the county. We currently have, and this isn't counting the small split units we have, we've got 141 units that we take care of. Now, that's in every building in the county. So far to date, I believe the last time I came in here was in September, asking for money. We have spent a total of $526,163 on new units. That's 40 units. That's 40 units. That's an average of about $13,000. Now, some of them are way more than $13,000, and other ones are way under, but that's an average. Right now, I think we're doing the right thing. We're continuing to replace this fail. I don't see any reason in my department to get away from that, so what I'm asking for is another $75,000 to use until it's gone, and I'll be back. I believe y'all have got the documentation on every unit that I've replaced and where it's went. The jail, and I don't have the number, but I think I only like three at the jail right now. I think I've just about replaced everything at the jail. I think the original prospectus when I first got here, if I'm not, if I'm not speaking out of turn, but I think I'm correct on that, there was, they were looking at, there was a project out there for like 23 units at 2.3 million dollars.
Now, that was that train deal, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so...
Looks like, it, looks like we did the right thing three years ago.
You guys did the right thing. There's no doubt about it. So, that's, and I would have liked to went a little longer this time with the last bucket of money, but the prices and availability are terrible right now, so it's, it's...
Hey, you're going into wintertime. This might last you till springtime now.
I'm praying it lasts till springtime. Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the additional funding of $75,000 to repair or replace failing HVAC units in county buildings.
Second.
Fund 55?
Fund 55.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the $75,000 from Fund 55 to replace or repair failing HVAC units, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Ms. Riley. Doing a good job.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Item number seven, I understand that we are pulling for further discussion. We're getting additional bids in, and am I correct in that assumption, Drew? And, but...
Yes, sir. You are?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. At the time of putting this item on the agenda, we only received one bid back from one vendor. And of course, when that happened, now we have vendor two and three submitting their bids. So, I'd like to pull this, to review everything, to make the best decision before we move forward.
Okay. Good. I agree with that. All right. So, I didn't remember... Okay, good. I agree with that. All right, so item number seven is pulled, and that brings us to item number eight, consider and take appropriate action to approve Ray Jones and Al Ke, Al Keese for Reserve Deputy Constables, Precinct Four positions. And I just got a deal from Chad Jordan that he had to leave again. Something happened at JP Court here. But does anybody wish to speak on his behalf? I don't see any constables out here at all. But.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a reserve deputy, non-paid, right?
Exactly right.
I'll just make a motion that we approve Ray Jones and Al Keese for Reserve Deputy Constable, Precinct Four.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to approve Ray Jones and Al Keese for Reserve Deputy Constables for Precinct Four positions, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Happy holidays, and we're out at 10 minutes to 10.